Trenton City Council Conference Session Tuesday, April the 2nd. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we would stand for the flag salute. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison. Alright. Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Yeah, Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Yeah, myself, Brandon Garcia, Municipal Clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Kologji, present. And Mr. Wes Bridges, Law Director, is present as well. Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
Proceed with the invocation, please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen. We can continue with public comment?
Certainly. Are there any members of... Oh, thank you very much. We'll take the public comment clipboard. And in the meantime, just so anybody knows who has signed up, public comment is five minutes. You may address anything that you wish. Do understand that the council does not have to respond to you. So please do feel free to address anything you wish. I have one member here for public comments side, Chris Hutton.
Moving the shit around, guess what? I can't find my IRS check.
Excuse me. If you would, please mute yourself. We're having a public meeting and we do not need the commentary. You can mute whoever that wants. Thank you. Alright.
Sorry about that, y'all.
I believe so. Go right ahead, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
It's Christopher Hutton. I'm going to use 225 North Clinton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Christopher Hutton. I'm a retired Trenton Police Officer and speaking on behalf of myself and many other retired officers still waiting to be paid our retro pay from the city. As you all know, a few of us were here for the last city council meeting on March 21st to get an answer as to why we have not been paid yet. Most of you said that you were under the impression that we were already paid or that the paperwork was completed. So as of last council meeting, we all came to the conclusion that the members of the Police Department lied to you about the outcome of the paperwork and status. At the end of the last council meeting, Business Administrator, Mr. Cruz, spoke to us and assumed that the paperwork and information needed was sent to the accountant. We advised him that as of 3:00 PM on that day, the accountant still has not received the proper paperwork needed to complete her job and get us paid. Mr. Cruz even went as far as showing us the email sent to the accountant. However, upon looking closer at the email in question, it was just a list of names of the retired officers and not the financial figures and information needed for the accountant to complete her job. Mr. Cruz did promise to us that tomorrow after his haircut, he would speak to Jeev and Captain Slack as to why the information still has not been sent. From what I hear, Mr. Cruz did speak to Jeev, but the only thing she told him was that it was being taken care of and that she was in contact with us. This is another lie she has told Mr. Cruz because she has no contact with us, nor is any of the needed paperwork completed and sent to the accountant. So, Mr. Cruz, I don't even know if he's here today. So with this new information provided, what is your next course of action to get this resolved? Madam President and Council, to this date, we have spoken to the Internal Affairs Department, specifically Detective Garcia, Detective Captain Poncello, about this matter, who have spoken to Jeev several times, both in person and on the phone. Each time, Jeev had told Detective Garcia and Detective Captain Poncello that the paperwork was done. Most recently, that we were getting paid on March 28th. We also tried getting information from PBA President Mike Shoretty, who has also been dodging us and lying to us. Most recently, he has told us that he was in communication with the accountant and that the information that he confirmed, that he received the payroll information needed to complete the calculation. We just learned yesterday, April 1st, that that information Mike Shoretty gave us was another bold-faced and blatant lie. Before you is a copy of the email between retired Cannon Officer Matthew Bloodsoe and Michelle Swisher, who was the assigned accountant in charge of doing our calculations. In the email, Ms. Swisher states that they are still waiting for an official list of retirees/ resigned officers. Also before you is a copy of two emails to Jeev's supervisor, Captain Slack, and also Police Director Steve Wilson, asking them why we still have not received our retro checks despite the active officers, suspended officers, and officers that left to go to other departments already being paid. Those emails still have not been answered by other individuals. So Director Wilson, what is your next course of action to get this resolved? Council Members, despite what you have been told or what you think, the emails I have provided is proof that the city has not moved forward with any payments for the retirees. However, they have already paid the active members back in December. They also paid the suspended officers and those that moved to other departments on February 15th. So why, after several years of dedicated service to the city, are myself and other retirees being pushed aside, lied to, and not paid?
What is it now? Want to turn the volume up on them?
I would respectfully, Council President, recommend not responding to this. Obviously, there is a dispute. There's an issue that could wind up in potential litigation that deals with personnel matters. I defer to Mr. Cruz if he's comfortable answering it, but I would refrain from getting involved in anything, you know.
I didn't hear her. I heard my name, but I didn't hear what you asked, Madam President.
She asked for a response. I'm sorry.
No, I asked if it would be alright to ask you to give a response or to tell us an update as to what is going on regarding the retro payments for the retirees, if you can, but they're suggesting it not because it could end up in litigation. So I'll strike the question if you don't feel comfortable answering.
And that's actually what I was going to say because when I met with the group... By the way, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Good evening, everyone. Madam President.
Thank you.
Vice President. When I met with them after the last council meeting, they also mentioned that there is possible litigation, that they are seeking legal guidance, and I would much rather not answer that question at this time.
I would, in overbunds of caution, Council President, I'd ask Council's legal representative to weigh in. That'd be you. So whether or not this is a proper... This is proper. In terms of answering the question, whether or not that's proper.
On your call, Madam President.
Look at your paycheck. Don't stare. Don't stare at me. Look at your paycheck. Don't stare. Staring your shit in your head. Don't stare.
We're not going to debate. We're not going to debate.
We've already settled your lawsuit. Don't stare at me.
Director Bridges.
Okay.
Can we have order, please, gentlemen?
If we could discuss it, if you'd like to keep staring.
Okay. Yo, Wes, man.
Madam President.
We'll begin with Councilwoman Edwards, please. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to make a comment on that situation, but I don't think we can because we have already released... All the information that is available was already given. So I'm just going to move past that and allow personnel to continue to do their due diligence with that. So I don't really have any comments to make this evening.
Alright. Okay. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening, everyone. So I wasn't expecting that just quick, but that's okay. I have a couple of announcements on this evening, not responding as well. But there are a couple of events that are coming up. As I mentioned at the last one, the 2024 Gala at Passers Theater, where our very own Maria Richardson is being honored, is this Saturday. That's going to be at the Trenton Country Club on April 6th. Doors open at 6:00 PM. At Mott Elementary, they're having their first-ever Dress-Up Career Day for second and third graders, and that's going to be on Wednesday, May 15th, from 9:45 to 11:45. All are invited, and this is hosted by Mott School along with Campfire. As I mentioned last time, there's also a Healthy Kids Run. That's going to be for five consecutive Sundays. That will begin on Sunday, April the 14th, and one consecutively for every five weeks after that. I have a form here if anyone wants to scan. It is $5 per child for all five weeks total. If you would like to sponsor a child, that would be greatly appreciated. And this is sponsored by Healthy Kids Running Series. Finally, let's get this flyer up. On April 27th, at Great Mount Zion, there's going to be a pre-Mother's Day celebration. Sisters sewing into sisters for Moms-to-Be. This is being sponsored by NCBW 100 Central Jersey Chapter along with Great Mount Zion Amy Church Children's Future and Mercy Street Friends. For anyone who would like to know more, you can either see me or go on my page on Facebook, and it will be circulating on social media. That is all I have, along with our city's... Thank you. Mission statement, I'm mixed up there. It is a lot going on. Thank you. Our city's mission statement is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and we'll have to enjoy the rest. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being present. I'm just going to make a couple of announcements. There are some free acting classes that are going to be going on from April 10th through April 17th, April 3rd, April 10th, April 17th, April 24th. And that will be held at Mercer County College and hosted by the Puerto Rican community and friends. If anyone would like to sign their kids up, their age is 10 through 17. Please come out and support that. We also have Trenton Local Eats, which will be at Candlelight on April 20th, supporting Candlelight Lounge, if anyone is available to come out. And just for some of my residents who have been reaching out to me on some of the concerns, we are working very, very hard about this rent stabilization, and so hopefully that you will see that come forth really, really soon. Hope prayerfully on this next meeting agenda, if they can get it in on time. As far as all of the people that expressed interest on being on the rent stabilization board, so hopefully you'll see that come forth very, very soon. And I just want to say happy Autism Month as April is Autism Month, and shout out to all of my students and all of our other students and anyone else who has autism. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Williams. Council Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Good evening, everybody. I really don't have anything this evening. Thank you all for coming out despite the weather. Just remember that this Saturday, myself, Council President Feliciano, and Councilwoman-at-Large Chelsea Edwards are hosting Let's Talk South Trenton at One Up One Down on Cass Street from starting beginning at 1:30. So please come out and just see, you know, what's going on particular to the south ward. Everybody have a great night. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President, for your patience. So I have a couple of announcements and a statement. So first one is, I'd like to remind everybody of our next Northwood CPAC meeting, two Wednesdays from now, on April 17th, the Galley Baptist Church. Please come. It is a very good meeting, exchange of information between the Police Department and the citizenry, and a lot of good ideas come from that. And I also want to announce tomorrow, if folks don't already know, Slam &amp; Brew will be having its grand opening at probably somewhere between 11:30 and 12 o'clock. I've gotten two different times, but I've been told by Mr. Sasso it's 12 o'clock at 24 South Warren Street. It's a great new business that's opening, so please do come out and support it. Also, I wanted to announce this a little early, but on April 26th at 6:30 at Westminster Presbyterian Church, The Trenton Project, which is a collaboration between Princeton University students are taking a history class, creating documentary films on Trenton itself. And I had a chance to meet with some of the students today at the Trentonian Collection. And the great thing is, Council President, they are really doing some excellent research on our city, trying to find out history, talked to a lot of folks to really get it right. So this should be a great event, and hopefully everyone can attend. And some of the subjects they're talking about is Prairie Street, the history of taverns in the city, Mill Hill, to the director of the judicial system in the city of Trenton, being a Puerto Rican youth in the 1960s, as well as today, and some other great ones on Reverend Woodson, as well as the Spring Street and some of the areas of our city. So please make sure to try to attend to that event. And another thing that's come up many different ways, I know my colleagues have heard from constituents about this particular issue, is not having enough inspectors in our city. And it's really coming to a head with trying to advance our city with having different departments be able to actually inspect properties so they can finish, be get developed, as well as having enough inspectors to make sure that our city's safe. So what I'd like to ask is if, you know, our friends at DCA and Communications of our city, I know they can't hire people and have them be deputized as city employees, but perhaps they could work with our city administration to be able to have the funds to hire more inspectors throughout our departments. It is getting pretty bad even with garbage inspections. So this is something that's very, very much necessary. And then another area of concern is finding another mechanic to help in the fire department, which I've been told by a number of personnel in the past that they would really like to have another mechanic. That would be very much helpful to making sure our city's safe, as well as Trenton's bravest or protecting us. So thank you very much, everybody, for joining us this evening, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harrison? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. Alright, so good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to those that came and spoke tonight. And we don't have too much to say, except that on Friday from... Oh, I got you. On Friday, from 9:00 to 11:00, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Edwards and I are doing coffee with our Trenton Fire Department and First Responders at Slam &amp; Brew. So if you're available and around, come on and hang out with us for a little while as we have a good time with them. And then on Saturday, as Council Vice President said, CVP, Councilwoman Edwards and I will be at One Up One Down talking about South Trenton and what's going on. So I wasn't... I was toying back and forth with this. Okay. I was toying back and forth with this about whether I was going to say something or not, and I am going to say it. The message that I would like to give to our constituents and residents in the city is to be careful about what you read or what messages are being brought forward to you by media, so-called media. Because many times, people like to sensationalize things that are not so. I would like to commend my colleagues on the work that we do collectively, whether the media chooses to pick it up and come out for all of us rather than a few of us to highlight what is actually being done. When you have media outlets that try to be divisive or divide and conquer, I'm here to let you know it's not going to work because we're doing the work. And just because you may not see us all in one place together does not mean that we do not support the works that are being done. City Council's job is to be the checks and balances to the administration. When we decide to go out, should our schedules allow it, we will be where we can be and support who we can support. It is not that we're not, we don't care, or we're not doing the work. Councilwoman Harrison does a lot of stuff that many of us will never see from helping elderly people with their lawns or helping people getting issues done out east Trenton. But it's not about calling the newspapers to say, hey, look at me, I'm over here doing it. He does it. Councilwoman Williams has her CPAC meetings where she has the police come out and talk to the residents, and she has her own other meetings that she has with her Northwood constituents that the media may not get a call to come out for. And if they do get a call, they choose not to come. We have Councilwoman Edwards, who is out and about with her Young Professionals Network, doing things and moving through the community, embracing and talking to her constituents. Again, media being selective in who they choose to support. We have Councilwoman Jenna Figueroa Kattonberg, who is out and about doing things constantly. For those that are on Facebook, you'll see what's going on. She's potholes, picking up this, picking up that, animals, this and that, all over the place. Again, the media is selective. Councilwoman Frisbee, she's been having her community meetings and everything and walking and talking through her ward, going and seeing people. Media picks and chooses what they do. And me, myself, oh, I'm doing the work. It's all over the place. We honoring cops and honoring everybody right where they are. But that doesn't get picked up because it's selective media. So, well, they picked up Councilwoman Gonzalez. They get... No, no, no. I'm talking about media and people being selective on what they read and what they listen to. And Councilwoman Gonzalez does work as well. I'm talking about selective media and how people need to watch and pay attention to the media and what is being highlighted. We are all doing the work. And if I can't be someplace or my colleagues, we are a working council that has full-time jobs. So if we're not there, it is not because we don't care. It is because we just could not be present. I hope I've made that crystal Feliciano clear to those who would be interested. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I appreciate your time. Mr. Garcia, we can continue. Oh, one more thing. Councilwoman Frisbee has something that she omitted when she did her announcements. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Just a great night. I did want to make mention real quick that the month of April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So we ask that you would be sensitive to those that are around, those who may have or are going through. There are several people in this city that are being abused one way or the other, and I... There are a lot of things that are going on to highlight that. So we ask that not highlighted to bring attention to. So I ask if you know of someone and they need help, please bring it to our attention, and we can see about getting them help. The other thing is, as Council President didn't mention, actually, next Monday is the West Ward Community Conversations at 5:30 PM. There will be the Hermitage Police Command Station there. And the last thing is that Public Safety Appreciation Day is April 20th, and that's for all of Mercer County, for Trenton, Hamilton, Ewing, Lawrence, Mercer County, April 20th at 3:00 PM. And it's going to be at the new station, the Station Tappas and Bar, and that's located downtown in the city of Trenton, 14 South Warren. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Mr. Garcia, let's continue.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on with the agenda. We are at old business. And we'll go over our ordinances. Ordinance 24-13, Bond Norton is providing for Phase 4 of the Lead Service Line Replacement Program in the Trenton Waterworks Service Area by the city of Trenton and the County of Mercer State in New Jersey appropriating $10 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $10 million bonds or $10 million bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Excuse me. And, Madam President, if there's no questions towards that ordinance, I'll move on. Ordinance 24-20, Ordinance Supplementing and Amending Chapter 309 Water and Sewer of the Code of the City of Trenton by adding Article 9, mandatory replacement of lead service lines in conformance with New Jersey state law.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam President. I do have a couple of questions on this. Mr. Director Semple, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President, Vice President, Council Members. Sean Semple, Director of Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Semple. I have just a couple of questions on this. I wanted to know how close are we to being on track with this project?
We have a couple of lead line projects going on at the same time. They have the EPA grant that we just received, the bid awards for reviewing it, and we are about to award. But this ordinance is giving us permission to get all the lead lines out because safety of our constituents, or water users, I should say, is most important to us. I know some people have some questions concerning this ordinance and how strict it is. But we have given some options here to the residents. Two, you could do it yourself and provide us the proof if you don't want us to come into your houses. We are offering it for free to run the service lines from the main to your meter in the house at no cost at all. There are some people who don't want us in their houses. You could do it yourself. But we have to. Protecting the people was very, very important to us because we don't want people coming here with lead poisoning, and they're going to blame us. want people coming here with lead poisoning, and they're going to blame us. There is no lead coming out of that plant on Route 29. The lead starts from your service and within your household, so we got to get it right.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And to be very clear, I am for this. I am all for getting all the lines switched out, and I'm grateful that it is not costing our taxpayers anything that we are actually offering this service. My reason, the reason for that question is because I see that there's a deadline that we have within this. I just want, that's why, that was the reason for the question. So I just wanted to make sure that we have enough time to do everyone in the city of Trenton.
Oh.
And not just Trenton, but.
We turn our surface area, we have up to 22, we want to complete all the lead line services. So this is just another phase that we enter into, and hopefully we can get more done without, with least resistance. As you know, in Phase One and Phase Two, most of the landlords didn't want to pay the $1,000, so they said, no, some of the people, they have the money to pay the $1,000. So this would allow us to do more service lines. The Phase Four that's on here right now, we are on a tight timeline to get it done with the $10 million that we just got, and with the council help, you have to make this possible.
Excellent. My next question is, because I am the West Ward representative, and seeing what PSCNG has done to our streets, I'm not being shady, I'm just saying, how are we going to be ensure that these structures are either made the same or actually better than when they came in with being smooth again?
Well, that will be inclusive of our bid package. We will have to restore in kind what we took out. We can make it, make sure it's restored the way it is.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Oh, and then my last question is, how does this affect renters and owners who are not, those renters who are not, not the owner? Will it be that if the owner does not respond to the request, will the, because I was reading that it says that the person collecting the funds, so it's not always the person who's collecting the rent that is actually the owner, that is the landlord, and they have no say-so about the property? Will that suffice if we say, will a landlord be able to sign off on this if they cannot, if we cannot get an owner to respond?
It's a good question. Let me see how I can answer this the best. We have some provisions in here that the landlord, we have to reach, we have to get to the owners regardless to get their permission. I don't think they're going to have a problem. They don't have to pay, so I don't anticipate having any problem. The people that given us the problems right now is the people who's been stealing water over the years. They don't want to, to be honest with you, we've caught over 137 people without meters in the house for 2023. These are the peoples that, these are the people that are voiding us. Between this and the meter program, they're going to get found out. So, those are the people that we are just a little bit concerned about, but we have to get in, because the first case we have of lead poisoning come from our water system, why y'all didn't change my lines? And we don't want to go through that.
I thank you, sir. This, it was helpful. I just wanted to give some food for thought as I was reading through the ordinance. These were some things that came to mind, but I thank you for your thoroughness, and I look forward to everybody getting their lines switched over.
I'm looking forward to the cooperation, too, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions regarding the ordinance?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, Mrs. Semple, Director Semple, I have a couple of questions. First of which is, when this was originally introduced, I believe the estimate was either 1,000 replacements or 1,700 replacements, and I was wondering if there's been any closure on an estimated number that would actually ought to be done with this $10 million bond?
Well, this $10 million, we have to get a little over 1,000 replacements.
Okay, so it's, we still have a great variance between 1,000 and 1,700? I mean, that's pretty wide.
There's two bids out, one with a federal grant that's going to give us 750 replacements. And to make our quota 10% for the year, we need additional 1,000. That's why we went for the $10 million to cover that cost. So it's 17, around 1,700.
But the 1,000 will be from the $10 million?
Yes.
Bond? Okay, that clears that up for me. Thank you.
Yes.
And then other question to follow up on my colleague, Councilwoman Frisbee's question. Well, a chief complaint I do get is when service comes out, people are thankful, but then they do not get their sidewalk replaced, and I know she, I know she did ask about that previously. Can you guarantee us that they will not get an asphalt patch going forward? Because that is really, really bothersome, that even when it's done, in the past, it takes forever to get it fixed back to a sidewalk.
Yes. There is guarantees that once it's part of the bid process, that the restoration is done. I know we've had some issues with at least one of our, two of our contractors in the past, that we're still holding their, their money, because they're not having completed the restoration. But it's a guarantee that it'll be part of the bid process, and it's up to us to hold the foot to the fire to have it done.
Well, please use gasoline with that fire, because that'd make a lot of my constituents much happier.
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Any more questions? Thank you, Director Semple.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Moving on to Ordinance 24-21, Ordinance Amending Ordinance 2018, entitled An Ordinance Continuing Certain Positions, Fixing Salary Ranges Therefore, and Setting Forth Certain Regulations for the Implementation of These Ranges for AFME Local 2286 Senior Radio Dispatcher.
Are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Ordinance 24-22, An Ordinance of the City of Trenton and County of Mercer, New Jersey, Amending Ordinances to Rescind Special Assessment in Connection with Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
Council President, if I may interject with your permission?
Yes.
Just to go back, being at the second reading, we need to confirm whether or not there are any public questions or comments with respect to those ordinances?
I believe we do that on Thursday for voting day, no?
Okay. Or? Yeah, you're, actually, you're right. You're correct. I'm incorrect. Sorry. Thank you.
Any questions? I have a question. Is, is this where I can ask the question about if there was going to be an increase in our water rates? Can I ask that now? Okay, so I have a question. Thank you, Director. Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome back. Simple question. With us rescinding this special assessment, based on what it was saying there, it says the la, the, with, the last word is on the first page, where it says, "The law, NJSA, authorizes Trenton Water Works to recoup the cost of the lead service line replacement project from all subscribers of the public water system, i.e., through the water system rates, rather than through a special assessment imposed against particular property owners." Is there going to be an increase in water or sewer rates?
So I will make it very simple. We serve outside of Trenton.
I know.
We cannot do assessment outside of Trenton in terms of their water rates. So the answer to that is no, it won't affect the water rates at this point.
Okay, so what, so by eliminating this, though, so I guess let me be more specific for you, because I understand what you said at this time. Will there be an increase, because we're not getting the special assessment from the outside townships, will there be a water rate increase within the next year?
Madam President, good evening. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Madam President, if your question is regarding this very specific ordinance, this will not trigger a rate increase. This specific action will not.
Right.
Now, is there a need to increase rates for water and sewer? Absolutely, but that would, this will not be the cause of that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Moving on to, what are we, Ordinance 24-23, An Ordinance Authorizing the Additional Name of Joseph and Mary Ravenel Way to New Rose Street.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Colotti. Okay, so Mr. Garcia?
Yes, it's my understanding, Madam President, per the solicitor, that I'd like to see if you'd be willing to ask for a motion to amend Ordinance 24-23 to read the honorary name of Joseph and Mary Ravenel Way as opposed to the additional name. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
We're calling it honorary instead of additional. That's, that's the change for, for Mr. Colotti.
Hey, we're listed as co-sponsors on the original, because Council Law Director does not have that.
That what?
That we're listed as co-sponsors of this.
Okay, that's fine. So are we calling the roll on this? We have a motion in a.
I have a move. I do have a motion in a second.
Okay, so we can call a roll?
Certainly. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kattonberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On your call, Madam President.
We can continue. Thank you.
Certainly. Madam President, that's all the ordinances for, excuse me, for second reading that we have at this time. And looking at the resolution, on to resolutions, are there any items that the council would like to extract from a consent agenda at this time?
Give it a few minutes, please. If any council member has any resolutions that you would like to be pulled from consent agenda for discussion, now would be the time to, to say so.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
I believe 24-119 is a roll call item. Yes. I agree.
That's correct.
Thank you.
As well as 24.
And 24-117.
Yes.
I just have.
Note as well. I'm sorry.
Madam President? I have a question about 24-118, not that I necessarily wanted to be pulled for roll call, I just have a question that I'd like to ask.
Okay, let's get everybody's.
So 24-118.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any?
Council President?
Yes.
Just a quick question for 24-126.
24-126. Thank you.
24-125?
24-125. So please note, on these, when we do this, we're going to ask the questions today, since we have the directors present, and then we'll decide if we're going to move them to consent agenda.
And also 24-122.
24-122.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um. No. She has 122 roll call? That's what she just said, 122?
She's, she wants it to be pulled out.
Oh. 24-128, I'm not sure if we called that one or not.
24-128?
Yes.
No, but I'll include that. Thank you.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
I'm just looking. Okay, so the ones that we are pulling at this time that we have questions on are 118, 122, 125, 126, and 128.
I have pulled, just to be clear, 117, 118, 119, 122, 125, 126, and 128. And that is all of them, correct?
119.
24-130, I do have a question on that.
Is that to be pulled from a consent agenda or no?
24-130?
Yes.
She has questions.
Just questions?
Is that it, everybody?
Right. Madam President, if it's your wish, you want to proceed with questions and have the directors address these items now at this time, or would you like me to continue with the?
Yes, but before we begin with that, I just want to make it known to the public, just for public consumption, the reason why Councilwoman, Council Vice President Figaro Kattonberg and I typically don't have too many questions when we're here at this time, is because we have our questions answered at docket review, so we don't want anyone to think that we're not asking any questions. We're asking very detailed questions, but based upon the results that we get from administration, there's no need for us, unless it's just further clarification of something held over, then we would be brought forward to ask additional questions, just so you know that. So we can begin with 24-118, please.
Good evening, Madam President. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. And Madam President, for the record, when you do go to docket review and ask questions, you also have questions for the entire docket that we then ask directors to share their answer. We send it to you, and then I believe you disseminate to the entire council as well.
Sometimes we have, sometimes we have not.
Okay, all right. But, but yes, you do get your questions to answer in writing.
Yes. But I also think it's good, too, that the council can come up with their own if they have additional questions as well, to show that we are a thinking council, and they're independent in their thoughts and questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm ready to answer the questions for 118.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
So that was me. Director Cruz, my question is, the, it says that for this, it's temporary services for a full-time male clerk, and we were using someone out of, a business out of Somerset, New Jersey. My question is, there's no one local that we can use for part-time, whether to get aides like this for part-time companies that we needed to go to Somerset? I know there used to be one in Roland Potts Old Building right here on Broad Street. Are we looking, or is it just not there for to deal locally?
So, Madam President, this is actually a state contract that is actually procured by the state of New Jersey for all the municipalities to actually share, and if they wish to use it, then every municipality goes and, you know, goes and uses the contract. That gives us the ability for us to choose from the company, someone without us having to go out to bid ourselves to get it, because it's not just going to the actual place we would have, because it's above a certain amount of money, we would then have to put it out to bids.
Okay, thank you.
And so that's why, and the reason why we choose to stick with a season for someone working at a 10-bid agency is because the city actually saves money, saves about $35,000 a year in not hiring someone.
Thank you for that. And then the other part of that question is, is the individual, when we're going through these different agencies, are they required to be a resident of the city if they are, this individual's going to be working? If they are, this individual's going to be working as a full-time male clerk? That was my other question.
Right, so if the individual was to become a permanent employee of the city, they would be required, but because this is a contract, just like every professional contract in the city or a bid, contractors are not required to move into the city when they provide services, so that's why they're not required to, to move to the city.
Thank you, appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Can we move that to consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Noted.
Thank you. 24-122.
It's Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, and hopefully for Police Director. Regarding 24-122.
Good evening, Steve Wilson, Trent Police Director.
Thank you, Director. I know this resolution's pretty straightforward, a situation on donating the dog, which I think is an outstanding idea, and I fully support this. I was just curious, has the dog actually been formally retired, or is there a ceremony for that, if it's been in the city service?
There's no ceremony. Typically, the handler, he was promoted, and when he was promoted, the dog was retired after several years of service. And so the city normally offers the handler to adopt the dog since he's been with the handler and the family for so long. And the handler is an approved owner with a good home and everything that we would hope that a dog would be living in, and they assume all the expenses that the city covered before.
Okay.
If a dog was retired due to some type of incident, you know, on the street or something, then we certainly have a ceremony, but normally they just go off into the sunset with their handlers.
All right, thank you. Sometimes, I recently saw a ceremony in a different department they had, and then people in the public were allowed to come to it, et cetera, and then the military does that, too. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Can it move to consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Noted.
24-125.
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. I do want to point out that while these matters concern the Housing and Economic Development Department, our new director who is here with us tonight, Maciel Ferrara, these matters preceded her, but she will certainly have the privilege and pleasure of appearing before you in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Rich, and welcome, Ms. Ferrar, to the council. Just wanted to ask you one quick question, because the question may come up for members of the public, as far as with the contest for business plan, et cetera, who are the judges or how will the decision be made, if you happen to know that?
The, there's a committee that's formed with the UEZ leader, Mr. Maywar, and that committee will then be judging who the winners are. And there's criteria that comes down through the UEZ.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can this move to consent agenda? Thank you. Yes. 24-126.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I asked this question in docket review, Mr. Beach, regarding that last property on St. Joe's 325 that kind of standing alone at the end.
Yes.
Did we look into, like, what are we doing with that property? Is it owned by somebody? Are they keeping it? Is it just going to be standalone, not being?
I didn't hear that.
Whatever.
That question was not posed to me. My understanding, the developer came to my office personally and showed me some videotapes. They're in sad shape. I think at this point, they may just be knocked down, and then, you know, he's going to redevelop all those lots in succession.
Yeah, but 325 was not specifically added to the resolution, and it's just the only house left, it's kind of shorter than the other houses and kind of just stand, it's attached to the other houses, but it's the only one, so I'm just curious.
But that's not part of the purchase?
It's not part of it, yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming Councilwoman or Council Vice President that it's privately owned. I can confirm that, but it shouldn't impact this resolution, though.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, like, whether that one's just going to stand alone or, because I know it is attached, so to the other ones that are coming down.
Understood.
Thank you.
I'll confirm for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this going on consent agenda or roll call? It is, thank you. 24-128. Bless you. Good evening. Press the button to turn your mic on, please. Thank you, Ms. Tom Terry.
Yeah, I'm Wally Unitieri, Director of Public Works. I'm here for any questions.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Unitieri, I just have a, it's a real simple question. I wanted to know, this is for the recycling part plant, and I wanted to know, are we going to be doing anything? We used to do this before, I haven't seen it over the past few years, where we actually include the school systems to recycle. There's a lot that they are doing now, and it would be great to get them incorporated. And I say that because one of the organizations that I am involved with, we recycle plastic bags still, and we have gotten two benches donated because of that. We get the weight, and you can get free items actually done. So just asking to see whether or not that's something we're going to incorporate, and it would be actually a good teaching tool as well for our students.
Yes, Council President, I mean, Council President. Yes, we are working with Massacre County right now, because we noticed that there's a lot of slack off in the residents not recycling. And we are going back to the schools, because the schools, the students, they help us a lot at home with their parents to encourage them to do recycling. And right now, we are working with the Massacre County, which is responsible for our recycling, and we're working with them to get it back to the school to educational wise and some pamphlets. That's what I've got it right now.
Excellent, thank you so much, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Can we put that on consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. 24-130.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, do you mind elaborating on exactly what this, this project is? I know it's federal aid agreement to, with the Department of Transportation for the DNR connector to create the bike lanes and things like that on Union Street and Ferry Street and that whole area. Can we get a little, can I have some information on when this is going to begin? Are residents going to be notified? And also, I wanted to bring to your attention again, and I know this is a question for Santora, but that, that area over there is horrible with traffic. And as we're talking about creating these bike lanes and things like that, I want to urge you to consider that intersection of Bridge Street and Ferry Street and also Ferry Street and Center Street. Those are highly dangerous intersections that not even motorists, let alone bicyclists, can cross safely. You could forget pedestrians, because it's ridiculous. So is that going to be addressed a part of this plan?
I will let Recreation Director speak on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Maria Richardson. We have been working on this project for a little while with the federal government, with DOT. And basically, the idea is to connect the health loop from the Battle Monument to Route One, and then Route One, and then to Cooper, that will connect with another project that we have that will take the loop from Cooper Street, from Union Street, to, to the Marine Terminal. And so this is basically, this part, this resolution is basically to allow us to, to do the bid, because this is federal money, right? The construction aspect of it, we will have to come back to the council for that. But for this part, we have been having public meetings, and yes, your concerns have been considered and will continue to be considered for the development of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Ms. John Unitieri?
Don't, don't, don't go. She, she came, she, she rolls up out of the, the left-hand side.
Well, I was, actually, I wasn't going to.
I know.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So my colleague, Ms. Edwards, brought up a good question. So since last summer, I requested a study for those streets that she mentioned, Bridge Ferry, as well as Center, that whole area, under the bridge particularly, coming out with that triangle, because it is extremely dangerous. It's, it's Frogger on steroids. So as recently as last month, Mr. Santor said it is on your immediate list, but the issue is with Capital City funding and finding more funding to provide for that study, which is integral for that area of our city. So do you have any more news that you could share on the funding? I know it might be tough, because we're still developing a budget.
I know, but you just said it. Once we have the money we need, definitely that's on the plan, because we had a conversation about this last week, you know exactly what you're saying. But again, it's the funding, but once we have it, it's part of the plan. We're going to move forward with it. We already have everything in line, so all we need is just that account number to use, and we'll move forward.
Would you have any guess at when we would find out when that aid and that funding will be available to us?
That's something I don't know. I don't know when the funding will be available.
Okay, because that would be Capital City aid that would provide for that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for asking the question, Ms. Edwards. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, we're done with you.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, thank you. Run now. Sorry. I just would like to make an amendment to this. We discussed it in docket review, in the title, where it says authorizing the mayor and the city clerk. I'd like to strike "and" the city clerk. It is actually the mayor that executes this document, not the mayor and the clerk. The clerk attests to the mayor executing it, he doesn't execute it. So ma'am, I'd like to make a motion to amend the wording to strike "and" the city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, I had my head turned. Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee. Feliciano, I apologize. I don't know why I do that. Motion carried.
So Councilwoman, right, it's the Fs. I believe he's saying that and not. Councilwoman Edwards, so we can move this to consent agenda? This one? Say it, say it.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Garcia, we ready?
So that's on consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. And moving on, Madam President, to, oh, we have no other ordinances, thank you. That being the case.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez? Still not here. Council, Councilman Harrison?
I can hear her screaming yes from wherever she is.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're not expecting?
We do not expect the vote.
Okay. I don't know. Mr. Bridges, Director Bridges, are we expecting a vote out of this tonight? Thank you. Let's go.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Keddenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Keddenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams. And Council President Feliciano.